To the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. For today, the time is now nine AM. In attendance, we have councillors Augustine, Tully, Doyle, the Mayor, Martin and Madden, and we have, I believe, online, joining us through Teams Deputy Mayor Johnic. Do we have any other councillors observing? Okay, let's see. I'll move to the welcome of country, acknowledgement of country. The Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as the custodians of the lands, winds and waters we all share. We pay respects to our, to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of a proud people. Are there any declarations of interest this morning on any matters before the agenda? There being none, any business outstanding? I don't have any list of any outstanding matters. Confirmation in minutes. Item one is the minutes of the last meeting of the 16th of September. Is there any omissions amendments required? There being none, I'll ask for them to be received as a correct and accurate report of the last meeting. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Tully, thank you. Any discussion? There being no discussion, put that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor. Thank you Deputy Mayor, that is unanimous. Item two refers to the Springfield Central eScooter Pilot Report, or the outcomes of that pilot. Is there any questions of the officers in relation to that matter? Is there a relevant officer we can call upon? Thank you, Mr Delio. Please share your name and position for us, Tony, thanks.
Tony Delio, Manager, Infrastructure Strategy.
Just a quick question, Tony. I understand the state government is either currently having an inquiry with regard to eScooters or contemplating an inquiry. Are you aware of any, any committee reviewing?
Councillor Madden, I'm not aware of the inquiry by the state, I'm sorry.
That's my only question.
Yeah, may you wish to add something? There's a current state government inquiry. It's open until, I think, next month.
I don't believe it's commenced as yet, but the submissions have been collated, have they not?
Yes, I think there's only one more public hearing or the other public hearings.
Oh, they have commenced.
Yeah, so LGAQ have provided a submission.
Correct, yeah, and I understand our council may have provided one as well. Yes, we have. So, and I think that was more just in relation to our own observations from this pilot. Is that correct? Okay.
My apologies.
That's fine, no more any questions.
Thanks, councillor Madden. Councillor Tully?
Yeah, it was going to be a matter I raised during the discussion, but with Tony there, I just raised one issue. I'd like to see an additional paragraph, because this report could be referred back to in future years. Just a paragraph indicating the reason for the cessation of the trial. I think that's important. Yeah, we know that that was at the election of the company. So, I obviously got no problem with the recommendation to adopt, but could we get that amended? I think just a short paragraph indicating when and why, without going into a lot of the detail. But if that could be included, if there was general agreement?
I think that, I think that's a wise inclusion.
So, then it's a complete report from start to finish.
Just for those in the room, I'm not sure whether councillor Martin was here when that decision was made, or when that came about. But can you share with us, Tony, the reason why it was ceased, that, that programme, that pilot?
Well, the pilot was reaching an end anyway. But being mobility, we're obviously having some issues across other jurisdictions. And because of those, their inability to undertake certain activities, the decision was to, to conclude the trial, given that we had, it had run for some time and we had sufficient data to conclude the pilot.
It's my memory that we voted in this room to extend the programme, the pilot, but they opted out of continuing, is that correct, in the end?
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds right to me. I just, just a short paragraph, just indicating exactly what happened. Only have been three or four lines.
Through the Chair.
Yes, councillor Doyle.
From memory, part of the reason for not continuing, I think that approached us to expand the pilot into Ipswich Central and to make the ongoing pilot feasible. They felt Ipswich Central needed, and I think that formed a big part of them not pursuing it further.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Doyle, that was my recollection.
Oh, that certainly, that certainly was one of the reasons. So, yeah, I know that councillor Doyle expressed some very strong reservations about it being in Ipswich Central and I shared some of her concerns in that regard.
Through the Chair, we can, we can include that paragraph.
Thank you. Is there any further questions of the officer? No, thanks Tony, thank you. So, the motion essentially is that the report be received and noted and that the findings of the report be used to inform any future proposal for shared micro-mobility in the city of Ipswich. So, I shall move that. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on the matter? I'll, as the mover, I might just speak to it briefly. My, certainly from my perspective, I think that the, it was very fortuitous in the end that the, that the contractor in this instance decided to pull out because there were a number of reservations by myself and some of my fellow councillors and, and those reservations have obviously been heard by the state in their inquiry into these types of devices, among other devices, battery operated and, and other devices that are used for mobility aid. They're becoming an increasing concern. So, and admittedly, I'll be very, very interested in the outcomes of that inquiry because from my perspective, until there are some laws which haven't kept up with the need of these devices, but specifically laws and safety concerns addressed, I think that there will be ongoing concerns regarding their utilisation, particularly on footways. So, that said, I understand that the, the use of them in the Springfield Central area was relatively successful and a number of people who use them found them quite convenient, as they do in Brisbane and the like. But of course, safety trumps all, in my opinion. So, until that inquiry occurs, I'm certainly not supporting any further rollout of these types of devices in our city until those sorts of safety concerns are addressed. Councillor Doyle, you were the second, would you like to speak to it as well?
Thank you Chair, no, I just agree with your commentary and councillor Tully's commentary as well. So, happy to leave it to you guys.
Yeah, may you wish to speak?
I think you, a couple of things. One is, I'll just clarify that the state government do have an inquiry into e-mobility, safety and use in Queensland, that submissions closed on the 20th of June and the last public hearing was on the 8th of October, and there's a total of 1,212 submissions. I can't see one from Mr City Council, I just note that someone said that council had, so I wouldn't mind a question on us. I'm getting a head shake from the CEO, so, so Chair.
I can't see it in the list either. I can see one from the Local Government Association of Queensland, as you noted, Mayor. Thank you Chair.
Yep.
Serendy, you have other information?
Sorry, oh, through the Chair, I will check that, we may just have submitted to LGAQ.
Yeah, that might be the case.
And that may have been where ours went, yeah.
I just thought I'd clarify that. I do note that three other councils, I think Fraser Coast, Sunny Coast and Logan did put submissions. But look, overall, the, the eScooter pilot was undertaken within the areas of Springfield Central, Springfield Lakes and Spring Mountain, between July 2023 and October 2024. We could see that around, there were sixty, on average, 68 trips per day that would travel 2.4 kilometres for a duration of about 11 minutes on average. And the data also showed that the trips were occurring for the first and the last mile, providing that connectivity to or from Orion Shopping Centre, the University of Southern Queensland, Springfield Central Train Station, Springfield Train Station. And throughout the pilot period, there were no significant being mobility eScooter safety instances reported, with only one minor incident recorded. Our community engagement shows that those who use them, 81% had a positive experience from, and from non-users, safety regulation, poor visibility, so, so poor visual appeal of eScooters on the streets were their main concerns. Noting that obviously safety was the biggest one. Overall, the pilot demonstrated an alternative mode of transport for the area where the infrastructure is already suitable for active transport. And Chair, I think we look at the fact that this, this pilot was about, I guess, the being mobility scooter. At the moment, people can purchase their own eScooters and, and utilise them. And the state government inquiry is looking at that, you know, whether it's a shared, a ride share or, or not. You know, it's e-mobility in total. So, I think without a doubt, there's a strong focus on safety from people. Thanks Chair.
Any further discussion?
Yes, councillor Tully.
Yeah, oh, thank you. It's a pretty comprehensive report, yeah, and as I indicated before, with that additional paragraph there. I do recall, councillor Doyle will recall the initial inquiry by the operator. The CBD was the one, I think, initially they particularly wanted to, to use. And there was yourself and councillor Fekner. They raised issues about the safety, you know, that were there some on-street dining and high, high numbers of pedestrians in the CBD. And there were certainly issues that would need to be addressed for any other location that's ever contemplated in, in our city. But I thought it was an opportunity to, that we shouldn't miss, something that hadn't occurred in the, in Ipswich. But we are, are all aware of the, particularly in Brisbane, of significant issues, safety issues that have occurred there. I wouldn't call the trial a success, I wouldn't call it a complete failure either. We can learn from that trial and I guess there'll be opportunities in the future. But that report I would see as a basis of a proper consideration by this council in the future as to, you know, what areas, that obviously you need a fairly high population in a, in a concentrated area and where people are going to use the scooters, and people did, no doubt about that. Yeah, one of the concerns I had, and I'd raised previously, as you'd recall, was the number of scooters were just being ditched on footpaths and abandoned on footpaths, particularly near pedestrian crossings. And there was a safety issue, not so much in terms of a, you know, the scooters being involved in an accident themselves, but being a safety hazard, you know, on the footpath. So, I'm happy with the recommendation, subject to that additional paragraph being included in the report.
Thank you councillor Tully, any further discussion? Just in conclusion, it's my understanding that that inquiry wasn't just limited to eScooters. It's to a raft of different personal mobility devices. I think that's what they referred to them in the inquiry as a PMD. And I'm looking at Mr Delio as to whether or not that is the common phraseology, but I believe they call them PMDs, personal mobility devices. And I just, I guess as a word to my fellow councillors and perhaps the general public, I expect that we may see a number of them, a lot more of them after Christmas, as they're given out as presents to young people. And I have noticed just of late, a number of ePeewee bikes or Peewee motorbike style devices getting around our community at the moment. They look like about the size of the old Peewee 50. Everyone remembers those little Peewee 50 motorbikes that used to exist years ago and probably still do, but we don't see them as much now. There are e versions of those going around and are being utilised by members of our community, and I see that as being a safety concern. My understanding is that that inquiry will also cover those types of devices as well. So, with that said, I will put, sorry, CEO.
Would you, with your indulgence, could I just clarify, we have the answer to the question in terms of?
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
And with respect to the submission?
Yeah, so it was in fact that we completed a response to the survey that the LGAQ provided to councils to have the opportunity to contribute to the LGAQ submission. So, we did provide a response to the survey and we're happy to.
So, not so much a submission, but a?
A response to the survey, so we're happy to circulate that, if that's helpful, Chair, through you.
Very good. Is it, would the councillors like a copy of that survey?
Yes, please Chair.
We'll make sure that's circulated to all councillors.
I'd like a copy of the LGAQ submission to the parliamentary inquiry.
I believe we can, that's downloadable.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. The recommendation as before us in the report, all those in favour? Against, that's carried. Item three refers.
Affirmative, sorry.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So, that is unanimous, including the Deputy Mayor. We're now to item three, which is the Providence Town Centre Provisional Offset. Can I call upon the officer concerned to come forward? Are there any questions in relation to this matter? Just ask the officer to just wait there. If there's no further questions? If there's no questions, then, thank you. Sorry, I assumed that there would be questions. So, the recommendation is, as per the report, can I have a mover? Moved by councillor Augustine, a second up. Councillor Martin, any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous.
Affirmative.
Thank you, and unanimous with the vote of the Deputy Mayor. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Item four, Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report. Are there any questions of the officers, of the general manager particularly? There being no questions, the recommendation is that it be received and noted. It is for the month of August. Anyone like to move that report? Moved by councillor Doyle, seconded by councillor Martin. Any discussion? The Mayor, you?
Thank you Chair. It's great to see the Capital Works Programme leveraging the favourable conditions, the weather conditions that we've had. We're having quite a few milestones achieved in August, including the great work on the Purgas School Road Bridge Replacement, which is tracking really well. Work along Adalong Avenue in Thiguna is tracking well, which I think that people and those, those residents there will be very happy. And the stage draining at Champions Way and the reconstruction works on Dowden St Goodna. So, thank you very much Chair.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? It's unanimous in the room and unanimous with the Deputy Mayor, thank you. Now for the changeover of general managers. While we await Mr Davy. Item five refers to, it's an exercise of delegation, relates to all matters approved during the previous month under delegation by the department for the period 29th of August to 24th of September. It is for receive a note. Any questions? There being no questions, I'll move the recommendation. Do I have a second up? Seconded by councillor Madden. Any discussion? There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote. All those in favour?
Affirmative.
Unanimous with the Deputy Mayor, thank you. Item six, Planning an Environment Court Action Status Report. I believe that councillors received some advice within the last couple of days in relation to this of the, an updated status in relation to one of the matters on the report. Noting that this is a court order, sorry, court action status report. Discussion may need to be closed, in closed session. Is there any questions of the officers in relation to these matters? Which I note again, is only two matters before us, before the courts. No questions. It is a receive a note. I move the motion, can I have a second up please? Seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I just repeat the fact that, again, good work by the department. We continue to only have these two outstanding matters. They are the same matters that have been before us for the last few months. So, again, it's, I commend the department for their ability to work together with community and developers to get good outcomes. And if there's no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour?
Affirmative.
Sorry, I didn't see your hand, Mayor. Did you raise your hand? You did, sorry. Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you Deputy Mayor. There, I don't believe, that is the end of the agenda. I don't believe there are any notices of motion or any matters arising. Are there any questions or general business? Yes, councillor Doyle.
Thank you Chair, and this is probably maybe a question on notice. But noting, Mr Davy is there, so may be able to speak to it. This is around the need for the development of social housing policy. Whilst council's social housing position or strategy is guided by our local housing action plan and aims to increase housing diversity, choice and affordability through the collaboration with the state and the federal governments. And obviously, our recent Ipswich City Plan 2025 supports the goal by zoning land for a range of different housing types and affordable housing in appropriate locations. Sorry, I'm getting to my question. I'm wondering if we need to go a little bit further and develop a specific social housing policy that really clearly maps out our pathway for social housing providers. We know, we obviously recently approved an initiative in partnership with Domestic Violence Action Centre and the federal government. I'm wondering if there's any learnings from that project and where we can further potentially streamline and expedite the delivery of these types of projects.
Before, before I ask Mr Davy to speak, that question, obviously you have it written. Are you able to, the formal part of that question, are you able to forward that to the committee clerk please, or record?
Yeah, sure.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks councillor, through the Chair. Yes, the local housing action plan did seek to address all forms of housing, including social and affordable housing. But we can of course have a review of that to determine if it could be further advanced. Just worth noting that some of the affordable housing product and social housing product would see the benefit of some of our incentives, as in we've got incentives for attached housing, so units in the right location. So, if those products are in the right location, they'll already get some incentives. But we can of course review those.
Yeah, okay. I know, I think it's Morton Bay, council have a specific social housing policy. So, just wondering if it's on the radar, if it's something, and particularly off the back of, of the work we did recently with the Domestic Violence Action Centre and the federal government, if it might be, and it may not be a policy or a strategy, but just wondering the learnings from that internally so we can expedite and fast-track when those opportunities arise.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you.
Pardon me, sorry councillor Doyle, you referring to even incentivising that type of development?
I'm aware we've currently got incentives in place. But I really, you know, like to take advice from council officers if they think we can go further in that area. And if there's other examples, we can draw on from our, our peers, other local governments to see what initiatives or processes that got in place. You know, this is in the theme of reducing red tape as well. We're, we're hearing that a lot from the state government. So, local governments can deliver on, on housing sooner. And I just don't want our people, our community that are in that social housing category missing out on opportunities, if we can somehow support that.
Very good. Any further to add, Mr Davy?
Just that when you're looking at social and affordable housing, some of the challenges come with defining what that is. So, you know, in other jurisdictions, there's been an approach to, say, target go every development needs to have 5% social and affordable housing. Or what's that look like in comparison to the rest of the development? So, it's certainly something. So it's certainly something that we can look at, we'll look at the other examples. I believe we did that with the local housing action plan and then the incentives policy, but we can just have a fresh look at that.
Okay, thank you Mr Davy, and Chair, I'm just sending that email to yourself and Vicky right now.
Thank you. Any other general business or questions? No, that brings us to the conclusion of the agenda, the time is now nine twenty six AM. The meeting is closed, the next meeting will obviously commence in 10 minutes from now at nine thirty six, thank you.